To order, would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Councilman Slakka, would you lead us?
It would be Mouners, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilman McIntosh. Councilwoman Martin. Councilman Slakka.
Here.
Mayor Nelson.
Here.
Councilman Simmons.
Here.
Councilman Gibson.
Here.
Okay, good morning, everyone.
Good morning, Mayor.
All right, and we have a case here for Astero Bay Marina Commercial Plan Development. And Audrey, who's leading this off for us?
I'll start the title, reading of the title block and affidavit of publication. So this is a zoning ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida, considering a request by Astero Bay Marina LLC, Donovan LLC, and Sugar Mountain Development LLC to rezone from Lee County Residential Plan Development, RPD Mobile Home Plan Development, MHPD, Commercial Plan Development CPD Residential R3, and Agricultural AG2 to Commercial Plan Development CPD to allow for 72 wet slips, 150 dry slips, and other retail uses totaling 207,000 square feet with a maximum height of not to exceed 75 feet on land located at 5,000, uh, 5,000, comma, 50, 40, 50, 50, and 50, 60 Coconut Road, 23149, uh, 23148, and 23170 Weeks Fish Camp Road, 5227, 5233, and 5234 Drain Street, and 5119, 5203, 5207, 5211, 5219, 5225, 5220, 5228, 5230, 5231, and 5236 Mammy Street, Benita Springs, Florida, on 17.34 more or less acres, providing for an effective date. This is the second reading. The ordinance has been advertised. I've reviewed the affidavit of publication, and it is legally sufficient and on file with the clerk's office. Since they are represented by counsel, they may proceed first. Unless you'd like Jackie to give a brief history of the case, your call.
Uh, yeah. Why don't Jackie, why don't you just give a, just a brief history of the case, like you said, and just a brief overlay, and then we'll have Matt come up, okay?
Good morning. For the record, Jacqueline Genson with Community Development. The case before you is part of property that was annexed into the city. So there is a companion annexation agreement that is within your staff report. As we stated at the first reading, there is also a companion comprehensive plan text amendment that requires them to go through this rezoning process to a plan development. The case was heard before the zoning board last month on the 22nd. The zoning board voted, um, in a, to recommend approval of staff's recommendations. It was three to one. There was one dissenting vote. There was one member of the public present who had some concerns that mostly he addressed with Mr. Inc. prior to the hearing, but there were still just a few more concerns that he wanted to address, which we did explain to him regarding easements and access. But he was also in support of the request as well. Very happy to see redevelopment of the property. And there was also another letter that was sent in from WCI, who was also very supportive of the request. And also a gentleman from Pelican Landing Community Association that was also supportive of the request. All of staff's recommendations are contained in the staff report. There is one condition that we might be deciding if it's appropriate to put in or not, but we'll do that at a later time through the public hearing process.
Okay. Thank you much. Matt, what do you got for us?
For the record, Matt Uli representing the applicant. I just want to start by giving you an outline of how we're planning to put on the presentation. First of all, Jim Inc. is going to give you a slightly embellished and warmed-over version of what he did to the zoning board. Then following that, there is this, this one new condition relating to kiosks that requires some discussion. So Jim will talk about that, and we'll also be asking apparently Chester Young to address that as well. And then when that issue is done, I want to come back up and speak very briefly about one of the issues that was left open at the zoning board meeting, which had to do with consistency with the Lee County Comprehensive Plan and its legal significance. So unless you have any questions right now, I'll turn it over to Jim.
Thank you very much, Matt. Jim?
Good morning. For the record, James Inc. for the applicant. And today I get to show you what we're really doing.
Yay.
The real story?
The real story.
Lay it on us.
The good part. Hopefully I won't put you to sleep because there's a lot of stuff we've got to go through. The project is known as Weeks Fish Camp originally is, is the parcel down at the end of Coconut. It was developed back in the 40s as a place where people could go fishing out of and also a commercial landing area. It is located directly north of the, uh, the Hyatt. Let's see. Make this thing go. Jackie, it's not. Thank you. This is the Astero Bay Aquatic Preserve. Is there an on button on this? Somewhere? Because I think that's the problem. Thank you. Astero Bay Aquatic Preserve, which this is the southern reaches of it. Benita's down here. Benita Bay Marina is here. The county boat ramp is out here on Lover's Key. And our project is located right there. To, to blow it up to get you a better feel of it, this is our project. Coconut Road is here. The town center is here. So we're a marina and a, and a development that is essentially in proximity to an urban development. It's got Pelican Landing and some other residential uses in the area, which is commonplace with a marina that's, that's existing, is houses and marinas kind of coexisted in that process. The aquatic preserve's out here. You can see that we have good access out into the Astero Bay Aquatic Preserve and also good access out straight into the Gulf. This is most of the project. This is looking from the Hyatt down onto the project where the existing marina is right here. And Weeks Fish Camp is a 34-acre piece that goes out in this area, which was an unrecorded subdivision and had multiple quarter-acre tracts that were used for residential uses, mostly mobile homes through the years, some single-family. This is the, the eastern side of it that goes over to the stop sign that goes out into Raptors Bay and the Hyatt, and this is the subject property. This area in here is the remaining parcels of the unrecorded subdivision that my clients own a large chunk of, but there are a few residents that are still, still out in this area. Just a brief look of what it looked like. This is on our property that all of these structures have been removed right now. This is a picture of what the marina used to look like. We have taken out most of those structures. We've taken out this structure. We've taken out this structure. It looks, this one looks really bad because we used it for astero fire to training. So they came in and they cut the holes in the side of it and things before we, before we tore it down. This was the bait shack that, that again, we worked in cooperation with the Sheriff's Department, and they did some waterborne assault on the building before we tore it down. This is some of the single-family that is next to the property. This is not on our property. And they are in a state, some occupied, some not occupied. Again, this is one of the other adjacent residences, another adjacent residence, and then a single-family house that is directly adjacent to our property. This is an aerial view of the actual property. It's 17 acres, give or take a little bit. And then there's this 3.6-acre wetland that is up on the corner. This is a, a very pristine mangrove forest that's up on that area. And then you've got the marina basin, and you've got a collection of parcels that are being aggregated in, into the, uh, into the project. This shows the existing, when it was in the county, the existing zonings. And you can see a lot of mobile home and, and commercial plan developments. And, and there's a, a large number of mobile home plan developments because when the comp plan came in for the county, they had to go back and do plan developments to make these sites a conforming use because pretty much they were all did not, were not consistent with the, the comp plan. This is the environmental part that shows the, the flux codes of the environmental part. Spent a lot of time there, but this is the important part from the environmental standpoint. This is the 3.6-acre wetland that's there. And then in blue is some potential jurisdictional, but the environmental assessment was, was, was very sketchy because over the years it'd been dug on, it'd be filled in, it, you know, there is some water there. There is some cattails there. And this part, I'll just briefly state, is outside the existing DEP and Army Corps permits that we have in hand to do the development. So we have to go back in for a modification and, and deal with, with those issues. But we plan on just mitigating or find that they're really not jurisdictional. Here's the proposed comp plan that we have been here before, the council before, that you were so generous to transmit to the state where we're creating Coconut Village and we're creating the resource protection for the, for the wetland that's there. Comp plan language, it's, it's real easy. I won't spend a lot of time that we should be consistent with the comp plan language since staff and, and the applicant generate the comp plan language specifically for this parcel and specifically for a marina use. And, and you've heard those arguments in, in previous public hearings. So this gets to the concept of, of what we're going to do. We have come up with a plan of a marina-based with, uh, program where we have a marina and we have ancillary functions of a restaurant. We do not have any residential in here. It, it is strictly a marina-based with a new enlarged basin that houses 72 wet slips, which were historically grandfathered in, into the program where the, went to FWC and, and counted boat trailers and boats and historical, that's the number that they came up with. There is a 150 dry slip facility that sits right there that was included in the original Pelican Landing DRI and has kept its entitlements through the whole process, through the DRI. So it was a previously authorized. There is a, an outfitter ship store that's proposed, some future retail and parking that is, is on the plan so that we can have the schedule of uses. But there's, there's no real concept of, of how that goes together. We're, we're trying in the, in the large aggregate of create a little retail village down there for the resort activities of, of the Hyatt and, and others to have a little village that, that's integrated into the, uh, the, the marina. This is the restaurant that is out on the water that we would, we would like to have as a, as a proposed use. And, and this area over here is earmarked for potentially a three-story parking garage, which we're analyzing and looking at if there's a need for it or if it just needs to be more parking. There's the potential of shared with, with the Hyatt and, and some of their parking requirements and, and parking constraints that they have and, and potentially is part of a necessary part. But this was sort of a, an add-on to our original plan when we started and where we went with DEP and the Army Corps. But we decided to bring it into the plan development right now to, to have it used for parking. This area, all of this area right here is stormwater management. And, and as I stated before, this is the area where that wetland area is. So the intent is to integrate dry and wet retention, wetland mitigation, wetland restoration, create a, a, a functioning system that's there, which to me and, and the marina projects that I've done, it's real important to really pay attention to the stormwater management system because ultimately all the stormwater ends up going into Astero Bay, which is an aquatic preserve. So we want to make sure that it's, it's, it's very clean and, and meets water quality standards. Entrance road here comes in. We have associated ground parking that's there. The boat barn, the forklift goes out, launches here. There is a boat ramp that's in this facility right here with 10 parking spaces, which is kind of, our hands are kind of tied on the, the 10 being the minimum number you have to have and the number of slips that we're allowed to have under the DEP and, and Army Corps constraints, mostly DEP constraints that they put on us. There's a ship store right here, which will be your traditional, it's where you come check in. It's where you do the, uh, pay for your boat ramp, pay for your services, buy your ice bait, whatever that, that's right there. Little idea on the architecture. These were done a couple of years ago, so we've actually progressed beyond that. But it, it gives a feel, and that's why some of the boats may look large. It's, it's an old Florida feel. We're really going to try to get back to the, the 1940s kind of look is, is what we're going after of, of an old Florida fishing camp. So we're going to be looking for rustic materials. We're going to be looking for, for those kind of processes. We have recently come to the conclusion that it's not going to be called Astero Bay Marina. It's actually been called Weeks Marina. We're gonna, we're gonna stay with the, the historical significance of the place and the location. And, and the goal is to create this, this sense of place where people want to come down and not just go on the water, but to come down and potentially visit and, and just get that, that experience of, of the water. This is the, the current boat barn. This is current. This is where we are going with it. We've been working with staff on, and it's one of the deviations that, that we'll get into. But we're really trying to get into the, the final design of, of what the boat barn's going to look like. And it, and it's going with a, an old look. Obviously, we can't do a 1940s barn because everybody would consider that boring now. It'd look like a big warehouse. But we're, we're looking at, at having something that's attractive and functional, but yet goes to the flavor of, of what we're trying to do. This is just basically a, a quick timeline that shows what we're trying to go through here. We're, we're in the zoning process. We're going to be asking for approval of the zoning. And if, Audrey can correct me if I'm wrong, it's got to be contingent on effective date of the adoption of the comp plan when that comes back.
Matt and I will be addressing that issue. There will be certain things you can go ahead.
Yes. Yeah, that's part of the, the match process, talking about consistency. But to be fully entitled and fully done, we, we know we have to come back before you one more time for the adoption of the, of the comp plan. With that, I'd like to get into the somewhat nitty-gritty of the, of the deviations because I, I think they're, they're important to walk through. Deviation number one is the, the code requires that roads have a minimum elevation of 5.5 feet. And we're asking for a deviation over in this area. 5.5 feet creates challenges with the marina because you're trying to get boats in and out of the water. So what we've come up with is the actual entrance road coming in here is at 5.5 feet, which meets the intent of the code for evacuation of residents in the residential. And then we're going to drop it down to 3.7, which is what's required for our stormwater management system, that we have to keep everything contained and, and everything in our stormwater management system. But it allows us to get a little lower so the forklift doesn't have to reach down as far and the, the sea walls aren't as high and the gangways aren't as long. I mean, there's a whole bunch of functional reasons for asking for that part. Deviation number two, which requires a landscape buffer for a solid wall combination berm. It's the 416D where you've got to build a wall and you've got to build landscaping on the adjacent property owner's side. We, we have that shown here, being consistent with the code. But the problem is right in here where we have this road, the deviation is to allow us to upgrade the plantings in this area and, and in this area to have the intent of the plantings, but not have a wall. Because a, a wall would be, and, and also to put it down into a, a smaller space. It's in a 15-foot buffer, but it's still going to be highly vegetated. It's, it's going to protect these residents from the adjacent parking areas. So it, it meets the intent of what the code's trying to do, but it, it just does it in a different way. Deviation number three is granting a deviation require high turnover parking lot surfaces to be, um, dust-free. What we're asking for and, and the way the condition is written is some of, a parking lot over here or parking lots out in here, we may do or may want to do a shell parking lot for aesthetics for other parts. Not quite sure whether it's going to work. It's just with staff and I, we have to work out a, a maintenance program so that it functionally works. But it's done a lot on Sanibel and Captiva and Boca Grande and, and some of the more resort-y, island-y kind of feels, which is, which is what the flavor is that we're looking for. Deviation number four is to reduce the barn setback from 25 feet to 15 feet. This was a, a very major conversation in the LPA, and it, and it's why we had one of the dissenting votes is, is I didn't do as good a job explaining maybe is why we needed this deviation. And this concerns this area right here. Does not, the parking garage, should it be built? It, it has the appropriate setbacks. It's just the barn. And, and the argument of the barn is it was included and proved back in Pelican Landing, which goes back to the late 80s when it was started there, to, to have this 150 dry storage building on this tract of land. And it is this little tract of land that goes right here is what was the piece that was, that was left for this barn to go on. And with permits and with manatee protection plans and with all the complicated regulatory world, the barn has to go there. So if the barn has to go there and the barn is 150 slips, which is about minimal for being a sustainable barn because barns have such a high ancillary cost of, you have to buy forklifts at a half a million dollars a piece. You have to do upgraded storage. And, and if you shrink the barn below that, it suddenly can become a economically unviable endeavor because you're spending so much money to build it, you can't get a return to, to cover the debt service and to cover, you know, any, any sort of profitability on the project. So we felt like, you know, it had to go there. If I was designing this from a clean sheet of paper and could do something else, then maybe we would have done something else. But we contend that that's the only place it can go if it's going to be there. And that's why we're asking for the, the, the 10 feet to allow the building to be there. Because the north part of the building is right on the property line. I mean, it's, it's not two feet. It's on the property line on the north side, and that's the size of 150-slip boat barn. And you also got to understand that I haven't talked about yet is this is a small boat marina. There's a limiting depth factor out in Astero Bay of three point, a couple, couple feet. So we know these are going to be 30 feet, give or take a little bit. Outboards is, is really all that can functionally serve us out of this marina, which is what Astero Bay is. Astero Bay is big on pontoon boats. It's big on bay boats. That's, that is the market. That is what the people want out there. So we've even compacted the slip design considering we're not going to have 15-foot beam boats and 17-foot beam boats. You know, those, that's just not in, in, in the, the design of the boat barn. So we really feel that this deviation is imperative. And, and just to get a feel for what's there, this area right here is the Hyatt. And then all of this area down in here is a mangrove conservation area with the Pelican Landing Marina down at the end of Coconut. So the fact that we're encroaching on the road is, this is a very limited access, very low traffic count road. And we are conditioned with upgrading the landscaping, putting in taller trees, mitigating it, working with city staff on the design of the barn so it blends. And the reality is whether the barn was here or the barn was somewhere closer to the water on whatever side, it's still in close proximity to the Hyatt. And, you know, another couple of feet isn't, isn't going to matter. Deviation number five is a deviation requiring a 25-foot water body setback to allow a 15-foot water body setback for the west end of the restaurant building and a zero setback for the south end of the restaurant building. The south end is, is pretty self-explanatory. We want it to be right on the edge of the marina. We want it to interact with the marina. We want guests of the restaurant to feel like they're part of the marina experience and part of the boating when they're sitting out on the deck outside. The 15 feet is on the backside, uh, right here to the, to the water body that, that's there. The way the parcel's designed and the way the system works is it's kind of where the restaurant needed to go. And it's not an encroachment, you know, that, um, most people are going to see. This is all mangroves that's here. The views from here, when you look out in a, in a westerly, in a southwesterly direction, you're not even seeing development. It's, it's so greatly positioned that Fort Myers Beach Development is up here to the northwest and Hickory Island is, is pretty skewed down to the southwest. So it is an incredible view. It's an incredible opportunity for the public to, to really experience, if you're not a boater, of what the, the mangrove estuary looks like. But we'd like to, to be at that 15 feet, which we feel is, is appropriate. Deviation number six requires a perimeter setback of half the building heights, which requires of every street rear setback. This goes back to what I've talked about before of, of the barn that's right here. And the barn is 65 feet high because it's a barn, because that's what it is. And it gets back in, if we have to do the, the half-foot setback for every foot vertical elevation, then it moves so far back that it, it again becomes uneconomical as a project. Those are the, the six deviations. We're in agreement with staff conditions. Want to briefly talk about the, the right-of-way easement condition. Met with staff, we are applying for a public vacation of the areas of the easements that are in question, which are over at this area in lieu of easements in this area. The way this came about is there, there are easements on the roads, but we actually are fee simple ownership of the dirt of the roads. They're not dedicated, dedicated roads. So we're going to come back to the public and ask for a, a public vacation of that to, to satisfy that right-of-way easement. satisfy that right-of-way easement. All the other conditions, except for one, we don't have any problems with. And that one came out of, and actually we just, I got the condition on Friday of what they're looking at. And that came out of Councilman Martin's previous public hearing last week where they started talking about the Astero Bay Aquatic Preserve and how we can protect the Astero Bay Aquatic Preserve. And she asked me to go attend, which I did, the Regional Planning Council, the Astero Bay part of the Regional Planning Council talked about it. We went up, we gave a presentation similar to here of what we're doing. And they are concerned with impacts and degradation of the aquatic preserve. And the condition that came before us today has a list of requirements that in concept we don't have a problem with. We're going to have signage. We're required to have signage. I'm going to have Chester come up and talk to that about. And we feel that with what we're doing, we're already there. And to have a condition where we have to build a couple kiosks when we don't really know what those are and hadn't really thought through them, we just have a problem with the language at this point of being interjected into the zoning conditions because we're not sure what unintended consequences that may bring to the project from requirements that are not spelled out and not thought through. And what I'd like to do now is keep on that train. And I'd like Chester to come up and go through the permits that we have and the signage that's required. And then I'll finish my part after we discuss that.
All right, thank you. Chester?
Good morning. For the record, Chester Young with Hans Wilson and Associates. Environmental resource permit for the marine environment. Basically, what Jim's asked me to speak to is that we currently have a federal and a state permit. What the federal permit typically does, in this case they also did, is take the state requirements and wrap them completely into it, all the special conditions, specific conditions. In our state permit, specific condition number 21 is a requirement to create a manatee and education plan that we have to submit to Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission, another state agency, for them to review and approve it. Somewhere in this set of drawings are some images of some of the standard educational signs that are out there. Basically, the Fish and Wildlife, DEP, other entities have created pretty much a series of standard signs. The majority of these are actually mounted on aluminum. They look like a street sign with a colorful graphic on the front of them. They're intended for 100% exposure in the environment. They take several many years for them to fade. This one is about 3 foot by 4 foot when you purchase it. This is a stock graphic that they give to all sorts of sign makers throughout the state. And you can go to them. This is, I think, the $260 sign. This is the expensive one of what they have. This is another one. I don't know that this particular one is required in this permit, but I think it's a pretty good one. Basically, it's to help remind people to collect up all of their fishing line, not leaving them hanging in the trees. Not only does it entrap the manatees, you'll see birds with it also. This is a small tooth sawfish sign. This was something that the Fish and Wildlife actually gives these signs out. And part of what they were trying to do is get a lot more abundance information. Where are they? What's their habits? How are they functioning? The small tooth sawfish was recently listed as an endangered species about 2009 and 2011. They finally determined what its critical habitat is. All of Lee County's tidal waters is critical habitat for the small tooth sawfish. That particular sign's about 24 inches by 18. This is a FWC DEP, you can see both of the symbols in the bottom, seagrass sign. And this basically is explaining why we shouldn't be running over the seagrass, running into the shallows. And if you do start running out of water, then to accelerate your boat and make a great big looping circle. I'm sure if anybody that's looked at an aerial has seen that. And anybody out paddling sees the effects of it. So once again, you know, and these things are backed up by statutes, as you can see on this one, when it talks about the fines that come with it. And if you're out there and FWC would happen to observe you doing something ridiculously stupid, they have the potential to fine you up to $1,000 under the sections that are quoted. And they consider that their seagrass too, so they tend to get testy about that. This is a graphic that I took out of one of the brochures for manatee. This is the speed zones within all of Astero Bay. In other words, all of Astero Bay is a speed zone, with the exception of the Mark Channel, which has a speed limit of 25 miles an hour inside of it. All of this type of information will definitely be made available. One of the things that Jim was talking about was the kiosk concept. Because these signs are meant to be weathered outside, we typically like to see if we can attach them to sides of buildings in traffic patterns rather than create a point-specific, you have to go look at it. We try to situate them such that when you're walking from the parking lot to your boat, you come to a narrow down point, typically the head of a dock. That's where we would start placing some of these signs. The other location that jumps out right away with these signs would be to put them on the harbor master's office directly adjacent to the boat ramp so that the information is in the location that the people are actually operating. Because a lot of people, they already know what they want to do for the day. They're going to come out, they're going to launch their boat. They're not going to walk 100 feet off to one side or 50 feet. This is talking about some of the information and how you put it up. These are actually, again, the rules from the state telling us what we have to do to be compliant. And I think where we're headed with this is that there's definitely going to be an information program that goes with this. There's no way to not have that. And it is already incorporated into our ERP permits.
Yes, go ahead, Audrey. I've spoken with staff as well as the applicant. And the only one who wasn't able to hear about it was Chester while he was giving the presentation. A condition as modified, I believe can be drafted, that would say, and it would be added to Section 6, environmental conditions. It'd be a new Section C in that condition. Prior to the first certificate of occupancy, applicant will place signs visible to all users within the marina portion of the project, educating them of the following. The list is pretty much the same. I took out the words blown up and used the word full-sized. I think that has the same meaning. And I don't like the word blown up or blow up in a ordinance. And added also sentence as to the manatees, because that is the manatee habitat. And that staff can also administratively approve the location of any signs so as to allow them within setbacks, if necessary, to be most visible for the marina customers.
And one other item to throw in that, when they sent the first round on this, they asked about creating an app for the phone. Well, my immediate concept was Lee County DNR already has one of those. They did it through WCIND grant funding. For the iPhone, it was $50,000. To turn around and create another one for the Android, I'm not absolutely certain what they spent. I think it was closer to 40. So while those can be neat gizmos, they can be way expensive. So what we would do is promote Lee County's Waterway Boating App. And it has the Waterway Guide actually in it as a drawing. It'll show you where you are, has a lot of fish facts. I was one of those that was a beta tester on this, so it's on my phone already.
So let me get this straight. Somebody suggested that you should create an app for your particular marina?
It was a discussion point. I think it was said with good intent but without a lot of knowledge of what it is entailing. Because the map that they have in the DNR has all of your channels out there and it also links it into a GPS, so it shows you where you are. In the venue of making sure people stay in the channel, this is one of the things that came up at the Planning Council. Okay, so we educate everybody who leaves from the marina. What do we do with those who are coming to us? If they're the kind of person who's not going to use the channel, they're not going to make it to us. They're going to run aground out in the bay long before they get anywhere near Week's Fish Camp. So I can understand the intent. You definitely need to educate people as to why they shouldn't be doing some of these things, and you have to work with them on those facts. But we would employ the tools that are already out there rather than create a new set.
Yeah, being somebody who's really familiar with the DEP Corps of Engineers' ability to, I won't say inflict, I was going to say inflict, cause you to put signage up and educational programs and placemats and whatever it takes. I think that they do a really good job of that. And the signage I've seen them require is right to the point, what it needs to be. And there are a lot of resources out there for people that you can refer to. I mean, like I said, instead of creating something, why create it? But anyway, Peter?
No, I was just going to say, you know, and if you think about where the people might need this app, they very likely may not have a cellphone signal, right?
Well, actually, the Waterway App that the county has functions all over Lee County. So most of Lee County, your cellphone works.
We don't have Sprint.
Oh, okay. Go south to Chukalaski and I don't care. Unless you have a sat phone, it's not going to work.
Zinga Sprint, okay. Okay, okay. And so what Audrey's proposing, is that okay with applicant?
Yes, that's okay. And that's what we've been asking for because the intent with what we're doing by regulation and also the clean marina part has a component of education. And the responsible marina owner has that part where they have the signage, they have handouts that the government produces, a ton of handouts are available in the ship store, are available in the foyer of the restaurant for the public to become educated on why Southwest Florida's different and why they want to be here. So we're okay with the proposed language that we heard.
All right. And, okay, go ahead and carry on, or are you done?
With that, I'm pretty much done. For questions is available for questions.
Questions? Council, do you have any questions for Jim or for staff on this issue? Any questions? Comments? Yes, Peter?
Just a couple quick questions. Very nice presentation, by the way. And I'm pleased with what's going on. Pardon me, because I'm a neighbor so well. What's the largest boat that can, this boat barn can handle?
If I was going to guess on a boat that could be handled in the boat barn, potentially it could be about a 35-foot contender with twin outboards, though they may not get out 365 days a year.
Yeah, I vote in there. I understand. The, what's the maximum number of boats that can be handled in that barn?
150.
I'm sorry, you said 150. What do you lose if you go to the, without the condition being changed? How many boats' slips do you lose?
If we had to back off another 10 feet, we're losing about 10 boats.
Okay, so 140, 150. Okay, thank you.
Okay, good. Any other questions? Yeah, Peter?
And I don't know, and if this is, you know, if you want to hold these for later, that's fine. You had said one of those buildings is right on the property line?
Well, it's kind of an internal, it's an internal property line.
Gotcha.
And that went to right here of this lot. You don't see the internal, all the internal lot lines. I mean, that's why Audrey read all those street addresses, because this is multiple, multiple tracks. And that's the internal lot line of what was in the Pelican DRI that had the dry storage and what is not.
And on these elevation variations, I guess, John, do you have any concerns on those? Or thoughts on those, one way or another?
Those tend to be a discussion between the applicant's architect and the city's architect. To date, I think that everyone is in general agreement as to the direction. The final details have not been decided yet, but that's going to be part of the development order process that they're going to have to go through.
Okay. And with these barns, and you know, I kind of like that design, a little something different rather than just the... And on the roofs, are the roofs all going to be that tin? Are they going to be green?
More than likely, it's going to be a metal product that's colorized to some neutral, non-offensive color.
Okay, good. Good, good. And you had mentioned the term "critical water." What does that mean? Sorry, I don't know what that means.
Critical habitat?
Well, you'd mentioned the sawtooth.
Sawtooth sawfish?
Critical, right, you know, critical water.
An endangered species, the sawtooth sawfish being an endangered species, there's the critical habitat that they live. And they live in the area above minus 3-foot mean low, low water in the mangrove estuaries is where they propagate and make more sawfish.
And as one that knows the Astero Bay at least somewhat, what do you think? Because I really don't have concerns here. My, not necessarily concern, a point of discussion is for the boats coming in. The people that use your marina, they're going to know what to do and they're going to be happy and delighted to have you there. The people that might be coming off of Fort Myers Beach and say, oh, let's get a bag of ice, or people coming up from Naples and, you know, how are they, you know, they don't know that water and they know it's shallow.
I mean, it's well-marked now and a reasonable boater should have no trouble getting in and out of the marina. You can't, no matter what you can do, you can't legislate some people's operation of a watercraft. It just doesn't work.
It's a reason there's channels.
I thought he was going to say you can't legislate brains, but...
I cleaned it up, what I was thinking.
Thank you. I messed it up for him, sorry.
And I guess, yeah, just to follow that up. I mean, not to belabor the point, but there are going to be boats that get in trouble. I know you can't monitor that. And I've been in and out of there, and it is well-marked. Some of these signs that you had discussed, I guess, you know, it's not, you know, if it's somebody needs to get towed or whatever, but you know, when you think of the ecology that's out there, you know, boats getting stuck, not the end of the world, but over time, you know.
Signage is very effective to the large majority of people. You know, that having the signage, having the manatees, having the seagrass signs will get people to think when they look at it, for the most part, but not in all parts. And other than old marinas, our signage is probably not that much different than snookbites or fishtails or some of the other places is everybody's exposed to it. And when we have our rental program, as with most rental programs, you go through a short discussion, education before you let somebody loose with one of your boats.
Sure, sure. And on, is that bottom, I don't know what to say, bottom, kind of over, yeah, to the left?
Where here?
Keep going, keep going, keep going. There you go, right. That's a barn?
That's the big barn.
Right, okay. And, you know, I'm just visioning in my head, the high-low, taking the boats in and out, right? You know, pivot, turn in there. I see, which obviously must be a green border around the edge, sorry about that. So is that, in other words, that barn's going to be there, but visually, is it going to go away?
There's going to be a lot of landscaping around it. We've committed to what staff's requiring, plus we intend to do more than what they're requiring anyway. I mean, you know, it's in our interest to have this a top-notch, solid facility.
Right, oh, absolutely, absolutely. When you come down Coconut Road, that first barn back there, that's not going to grab you and offend you any more than that next barn there on the corner, correct?
And we're, you know, way less than the Hyatt that's sitting there.
Right, right. Okay, great.
Okay, anyone else?
One last question?
Yes.
I was looking at the parties of record. I don't see any public here, but have you had any conversation with the residents to your north?
Yes, and as a matter of fact, we have had some internal changes in our operation and we have been reaching back out to the adjacent property owners. I think there's five or six to work with them and to provide, you know, the parts that's there of be a good neighbor.
Yeah, earlier at council meeting, there were several people who had issues. So if those have been resolved, that's fine.
We believe they've been resolved and I think that's evidenced by they chose not to come here and talk to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I think what you're doing, this is a great facility. It's a wonderful thing for the residents of northern Benita Springs and for the people of Astero. It's long overdue, it's a great facility. I really appreciate what you're doing there. I can't wait to see this. I can't wait to go eat at your restaurant.
Me neither.
And so far as the, I mean, this is what this area needs. This is what we're about. We're a fishing village. We've always been a fishing village. These are the kind of facilities that I think we should look forward to in the future. Do we need to be careful? Do we need to have the right signage stuff? That's what the Corps of Engineers and DEP does best. They really love doing that. So I don't think that, you know, adding more signs or, you know, pretty soon, I think the signs become the problem. They become more clutter than anything. become the problem. They become more clutter than anything. If you put too many signs up, no one reads anything. You get, you get the right sign in the right place, which the DEP and the Corps is really good at. Put it at the right place, put the right language, make it simple, people will see it and read it. So I, I thank you for bringing that up. I don't have any problem with, with anything you've got there, and so far as your building. I think that, and I, I did talk to the management of the Hyatt a long time ago about, you know, what you were planning and stuff. They were like, no, no, we're fine. So, I mean, I think that that, I mean, anybody else who goes driving down past there, I don't know where they're going, they're gonna, they're gonna go out into the water eventually, if they're, if they don't stop. So, yeah, I, I think what you've done here is great. And if, Counsel, if you don't mind, I'll, I'll go ahead and read the parties of record and see if there's anyone.
Oh, before you go one farther, Mr. Uli needs to discuss the comp plan consistency a little bit.
Okay.
As well as I.
All right.
Matt Uli, for the record. One of the issues that was left open at the zoning board had to do with the consistency of this proposed project with the existing Lee Plan. That has significance for the timing of this project, 'cause my client wants to get it done as soon as possible. But it's not in dispute that, to the extent that this application depends on the new comp plan category, that it can't be done until that category becomes legally effective. So the, the staff hadn't really reviewed that in great detail at the time of the zoning board hearing. We did put on brief testimony on that point. Bottom line is that we had dialogue with the staff about whether it is consistent with the Lee Plan. I think we're in complete agreement that this project, the zoning as proposed, is consistent with the Lee Plan and so can go forward. Partly as a result of that, the city attorney has proposed language to add to the, the ordinance, which makes it clear that, to the extent that this is consistent with the existing comp plan, that it can go forward and be developed. So bottom line is that if you wanted to hear it, I'm perfectly happy to walk you through the consistency with the Lee Plan. I've got all the policies that are relevant. I'm not proposing to do that, because there really isn't any dispute on that. But if you wanted to hear it, I'm available to talk about it.
On that point, Counsel, what's your proposal? You're content to go with staff's recommendation?
Absolutely.
Good. Audrey, do you have anything to add?
Yes, I do. And I passed out, it was in your packet, but just in case, and I provided you previously with a copy of the letter, but a copy of the letter I sent to Matt Uli. If you note in the letter, there is the proposed change to the language. But in addition to that, if you agree to this change, I do need to change your findings of fact that you're finding two, two things. And number two, B, that the proposed plan development is consistent with the density intensities and general uses set forth in the Benita Springs Comprehensive Plan pending the comp plan amendments, and also the Lee Plan, and that urban services as defined in the Benita Springs Plan and Lee Plan are available to adequately serve the proposed land use as conditioned.
Okay. Good. Counsel, understand? Good. And now I will go to the parties of record. Is Jim Murphy here? I don't see him. These are kinda rhetorical questions I'm asking here, because I obviously can see empty chairs. But anyway, Jim Murphy, not here. Bob Garcia? No. Glenn Brown Lee? No. And Bill Fraser? Bill Fraser? No. And that is, that is it for the parties of record. And we'll close the public hearing portion of this. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Do you wish to approve?
Wish to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve, and, and I suppose, as with the revisions that have been suggested and agreed upon between the two parties. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Motion to second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Slacta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Moncar?
Aye.
Councilman Mackintosh?
Aye.
Good. All right. Do you have anything else to bring before us, or do we miss anything along the way here? Audrey?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, Counsel, thank you very much. Meeting adjourned. Nice job.
Thank you.